If it was your wife's party.
All right. I'd like to go ahead and bring the November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen Warrington Board of Alderman Meeting to session. If you would, please rise for us for Clutch Believers.
Clutch Believers to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item would be the consent agenda.
First item is the work session minutes from October twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, on new housing construction. Next is the work session minutes from November the first, two thousand sixteen, on the property next to Denny's. C is the regular meeting minutes from November first, two thousand sixteen. D is the executive session minutes from November first, two thousand sixteen. E is the monthly grounds and maintenance report. F is the approval to hire Christopher Ross as a police officer at seventeen twenty-three an hour with a start date of eleven twenty-one, two thousand sixteen, and approval to hire Tyler Benton as a police officer at seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents an hour with a start date of November twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen.
All right. Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Motion made by Alden Miller, seconded by Alden Schultz. If we could have a roll call vote please.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next would be hearing from the public. We ask that you come to the mic, please state your name. We're going to keep you to a five-minute maximum. By not seeing anybody, we'll move on. Next item would be the Board of Alderman comments.
I have one question. I was out at the, out at Innsbruck at the Agape fundraiser dinner, and it was brought to my attention that there was a meet, going to be a meeting among Innsbruck, Warrington, Wright City, et cetera, at the Boons Lake thing. And you heard, did you go? Did you watch this?
I was not able to go because we got a last, it was like a day or two days before the thing. I was not able to fit it into my job to be able to get it in there. But it was a late, he apologized in the late emails sent out for the invitation.
Okay.
Very late, last minute. He actually sent out two emails, they just didn't come through on what it was and what it was for. It was a bunch of garbled junk, and when he realized what it was, it was like a day or two before, so.
So we weren't represented?
We were not represented.
Okay. Like I said, if in the future, if you can't, if you would let me know, I'd, I could fill you in.
If I get a little more notice, I can let you know. Not a problem.
The only comment I have, this will be the last meeting before Thanksgiving, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
And to you.
And to you.
Wish me a happy birthday, too.
Oh, I forgot your birthday, Karen, I'm sorry. We'll have a meeting for that, you know?
Twenty-nine again?
Again. Did you say?
We don't like to say again, just twenty-nine. Any other comments? All right. Next item would be my comments, and I'm going to keep it brief and say we'll just move on to the next one. Shop small Saturday. I believe we have somebody coming up to speak to us, man.
Yes.
This is one of my favorite times, it really is.
Not for me.
Well, I like promoting it, I love it.
I'm just very happy to see that No Shave November is alive and well. Congrats, guys, it's coming in real well. I'm Jan O'Learnik, I'm with the Warrington Area Chamber of Commerce, and I was here last year, and I'd just like to reiterate that we've got Shop Small Saturday coming up on November twenty-sixth. And the purpose of Shop Small Saturday is to follow Black Friday where everybody goes to the big box stores to get their, their bargains and deals. We'd like to encourage all of our community members and all of you to not forget about our small businesses that have the unique gifts that you can get for your family, your friends, your loved ones, that are very close to more being a small-town gift as opposed to just a boxed doll or whatever. We do have several places in our community and surrounding community that have some really nice, unique gifts, and I encourage you to seek those out. We also want you to remember to shop small for other things, not just for your retail things, but for your, for your gasoline, for your restaurants, for your nail salons, your barber, of course, none of you are using it right now, but just in case you decide that December's going to roll around eventually and you want to go. We have gone around to several of our stores and given them these canvas bags that they can put their goods in. I brought a bag for each of you, and I also brought you each a two thousand sixteen-seventeen Community Guide. It's new, just hot off the presses, and it's, this is what's used a lot in our community because the phone book is a thing of the past, and I hope nobody hears with the phone company. But this is what's used by many of our community members, and thanks to the help of the City of Warrington with the information about the parks, about the city, all of our important phone numbers and such, that's all listed in here. And so people who move into our community, they want to know these things. Where do they go for, to register to vote? Where do they go to get their license? Things like that are all listed in here. We are up with the Twenty-First Century now. This is online, and you can just go to our website, warringtoncoc.com, and this entire book is online, and everything is interactive. If you click on a, on an ad that's in here, or on the City of Warrington page, it will go straight to your website. And so it's very interactive and very user-friendly, so I encourage you all to check that out as well. Are there any questions about Shop Small or about the Community Guide that you'd like to ask or comments? Okay.
Just support it and push it.
We are, we are, and they've got banners, they've got cool little flags, they've got the welcome mats. American Express provides all of this free of charge, just so our community can market each other and ourselves. So we're very grateful that we can be included on that marketing campaign.
Excellent.
And I'm going to give these to Melody, and she'll just speak into them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
You guys have a great evening.
You too, too.
Take care. Good seeing you again.
You too.
All right. Next item would be the approval to close Main Street from Thurmond to Morgan on December third, two thousand sixteen, from two to three P.M. for Hometown Christmas Parade from the Warrington Downtown Association.
I guess Morris couldn't make it.
That's right. Any questions on that that maybe we can try and answer?
Make a motion, approve closing the streets, or approve closing Main Street from Thurmond to Morgan for the parade.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Aldman Shell Harvey, signed by Aldman Schultz. Roll call vote please.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item would be the approval of the West Interceptor Phase One and I seventy sewer agreement with Gonzales Engineering. John?
Good to see you all again. Ms. Castily mentioned that every time I come here, I'm asking for money. The contract that we're offering is, actually covers three phases. The West Interceptor, which is the Priority Two A in our capital improvement report. Phase one of that is the West Interceptor, which is about sixty-five hundred feet long that runs from the south side of the interstate to the lift station. And then there's a second part of this, which is a study for the sewer requirements for the West interchange. What we will do is review three options related to providing service so that we can properly size the pipes and make sure that everything obviously flows. And then the last thing will be is, based on that study, we will select one of those items to provide service to the West interchange. So the, I guess we get to deal with the, with the Corrigan and our Indiana bat. We get to do all that again. We're getting good at that. The DNR permits, we're looking at, incidentally, the length of the sewer estimated to serve the, the West interchange is about thirty-five hundred linear feet. So are there, are there any questions?
So when you say the West Interceptor, you're talking about where it ties into the lift station up at Fairland Circle?
Fountain is the lift station, I believe. Fairland.
Fairland Circle, okay. So it's, it's coming down on this side, all the way down. Where's it connecting on the south side of the?
Right now, it's just west of the entrance into what was, the Emo's is still there, but then, until they move up here. That's where it starts, and then it'll go. Now, we'll be paralleling the existing line, just like we did with the East Interceptor. So.
We think we have all the easements on this one? I said, do we think we have all the easements on this one, or?
No.
We don't know yet.
No, we've got to prepare them, and we haven't even started yet.
Okay.
So, but we know where they are.
Okay, well, that's a start.
Step in the right direction. Step in the right direction.
Yes, yes. And that's, that area's not as, as well-developed as the East was, so we're hoping.
Any other questions? No. Entertaining motion to approve the West Interceptor Phase One and I seventy sewer agreement with Gonzales Engineering in the amount of four hundred and five thousand forty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, signed by Alder Person Castily. Roll call vote please.
Aldman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. I also did want to report the revised agenda, I believe I keep talking.
Or the order, no, the, the approval on the order, change order number three?
Yes.
For the Water Street Lift Station Force Main Interface?
Right.
Or interference for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand six hundred.
Yes. We have, just to give you a quick look at the Phase One component financing, we're about nine hundred thousand dollars below the original capital improvement budget, so just, that's the good news.
But, here comes the but.
But wait!
We'll ship you the next one without any shipping charges.
Yeah, if you buy two.
That's right.
This is a, as, as long as I've been doing this, there's always stuff that comes up that you don't anticipate. In this case, this is the, the new lift station, this is the existing lift station. The sewers that come into the existing lift station are here, here, and then coming right down, Mrs. Murphy's driveway. Our intent is to intercept that sewer and this sewer with the new sewer that comes over to the lift station. What happened, this, this is Mrs. Murphy's driveway. What happens is, in this case, we found the existing eight-inch force mains from the existing lift station. That's, you can't hardly see it, but there are these red lines here, and here they are again. This is the newest one, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
This is the oldest one, and this is a gravity sewer in Mrs. Murphy's driveway that we'll be intercepting. Here's the problem. This pipe is that pipe, but I'm looking at it from the west, and you can see that this is solid rock. So the contractor brought this to our attention and says, I can't break that rock without breaking that, that force main, because they laid them right on the top of the rock. His proposal to us was, by time and material, to take one of these out of service by closing the valve at the lift station and up on top of the hill, letting the water, and cutting this, letting the water drain into a hole we've made, and then pump that back into the sewer to be pumped back up the hill. So what we would do is take one force main out of service at a time. He'll break the rock up to the next one, then put this one back in service, and then working from the other side, he'll break the rock, take his pipe out and break the rock under it, so that he can get it through. The sewer is about four feet below these guys, so. His proposal was, there's a lot of things that can go wrong, so he's giving us the worst-case scenario. If we, if, for example, one of the valves doesn't hold, then he's going to be fighting raw sewage the entire time he's working. And I think that's his biggest fear. He's figured five days at a maximum, thirty-three hundred dollars a day for his crew, and then a thousand dollars for parts and pieces. In confidence, he's, the superintendent says, I feel I can get it done in a day, at worst two, which puts us around six grand, sixty-six hundred. And that they will not be working on it, the whole crew won't be working on it at the exact time. So we'll be there keeping time, either one of the guys, or my guys will keep time on. But his proposal is for change order three, is for the maximum not to exceed seventeen thousand six hundred. I'm sorry to keep bringing this to you guys.
You're good, you're good.
Isn't it amazing that that pipe just happened to be laid on top of a massive rock foundation? Does it, it makes you wonder if whoever laid it, it's maybe a little bit out of line?
It is, it is out of line, and it's squashed.
Yeah.
They're both agged. I'm surprised they've, and that's what scared him. They're already under stress.
Right.
If he hits that rock, he's afraid of breaking them.
Oh, yeah.
So we wanted to develop a plan on how to attack it, and that's to take one out, you know, and serve it. Guy has volunteered to make the first cut on that force main.
What a guy.
Use the sawzall and come from underneath.
Start on the bottom.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
All right, I'll, do you have a question? I'll entertain a motion to approve a change, the change order number three, the, to the Water Lift Station, Water, Water Street Lift Station Force Main Interference for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand six hundred.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Delloy. If we could have a roll call vote please.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
You come back to us next time with like an Indian mound, I'm going to.
If we find bones.
I suspect Guy won't be cutting the pipe and probably up there helping Mrs. Murphy deal with the whole situation.
Yeah. And if I may, a little off the agenda, I wanted to report to you on this morning's bid, if I may.
Sure.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Well, I'd just say, good news.
Good.
Better than bad news.
We're going to take, we'll take the bids under advisement and make a recommendation here within a week or so.
Perfect.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next item would be the discussion topic. It'll be parking on Lakeview Drive.
That's not Lake Shore, by the way.
I believe.
Yeah, I had them put this on the agenda. I received a, I don't know if I would call it a complaint, a concern, from a citizen that lives on Lakeview about the signs that were placed on the road about no parking on either side. Since then, I believe we've discovered that the parking is to be on the south side of Lakeview, as I understand, and the signs were placed on the south side, but I think we need to move that to the north side. I think, I believe the staff, law enforcement, believes it would be better served on the north side.
And I'd have to disagree with parking on either side of that road, period. The houses that are on that area, there are other streets that they can park on, if they can't fit in their driveways, but that is a dangerous road for anybody to be parked on either side of it, for the amount of traffic that goes down that road. Obviously, I'm very familiar with it, since that's my home turf, and it's a nightmare with anybody parking on either side, and it's dangerous because kids are around there the whole time. I mean, it, to have any cars swerving in and out of cars on that road, especially there between Second and Third, the ditch is so deep that if they park on the south side, you're in the ditch and you're down. So I don't see that it makes sense to allow it on that main street, period.
On the whole length of Lakeview or just the section from Forty-seventh and Fourth Street?
I think it's down to Fifth, isn't it? Or is it?
Down to Fifth Street.
It's down to Fifth Street.
Oh, so you want to go even farther down to Fifth.
I think it's down to Fifth now, isn't it?
When you get to Fifth, it is no parking on both sides of the street per.
Because Lakeview goes a little bit past Fifth.
Yes.
Yeah, and this, you can't hardly park there anyway. But it, it's not a street that, this is a major thoroughfare street, and there's a ton of traffic that doesn't abide the speed limit as it is, nor do they abide the stop signs. So, and you've got a lot of children going up and down that street, and you have people weaving in and out around cars that are parked there, and there's absolutely no reason for these, these homes that are along that stretch, except for the ones that are Forty-seventh to Second, the ones on that north-hand side, I agree, they're a little limited, but if they need more than three parking spots, because all of those driveways are big enough for three cars, then I think they should be willing to walk from one of the side streets up, because it is just not a safe place to be.
I disagree. I think the road's wide enough, and then the spots that I'm, that I was, received the concern about, I believe it's wide enough.
And what were the areas you were concerned about?
Just west of Fifth to, I believe it's Third. I'm trying to pull up the map.
So between Fifth and Third on Lakeview, does that look small?
There's some driveways that have an incline drive, drive, and not wide enough.
That's between Fourth and Fifth.
I'm sorry.
That's between Fourth and Fifth.
The road is twenty foot wide in that section, between Fourth and Fifth.
How wide is it in the other area?
It goes on to be twenty and a half feet wide at Second, twenty-two feet wide between First and Forty-seventh.
So if we don't alter it now, they can park on the south side of the road as the one that stands.
Yes, even though there have been no parking signs on the south side since prior to me being here. There is nothing in our code that is, is no parking on the south side.
I think I'd rather do a study of traffic than allow it.
But, I mean, Guy, Guy Bolt, you and Chief visited that, correct? You both feel south side is a unsafe area for parking in, in the area we're discussing.
The whole south side?
Is or is not?
Is unsafe.
Parking on this, allowing parking on the south side is definitely unsafe.
Yep.
Because there's, there's no ability for a car to get anywhere off of the road surface.
No, there's not.
They're fully on the road, taking up an entire lane. So that's, I mean, of all the options, that's the worst one. And that follows the existing code.
And the signs are existing on both sides of the road?
Correct.
South and north. I'm just trying to get my head around this. And the south side, we've come to the conclusion that that's the dangerous side.
But yet, that's the one that currently, under the current code, is legal to park on that side.
No, again, I'm asking a lot, but how hard can that be to?
Okay, so then, just in, in opinion sense then, I guess, if they, if, if the no parking was on the other side of the road, just the opposite, would that still be an unsafe area? Or would that work for what Scotts wanted it?
I think it would work for what Aldman Schultz wants to do. I think I tend to agree that allowing parking along Lakeview, it creates hazards, but, you know, if, if it's the board's pleasure to, to allow parking on Lakeview, the better of the two options is to allow it on the north side.
The other problem we have with allowing it on the north side, because I've noticed it already since the signs were there, people are now parking in their yards, which, again, causes a whole new problem, you know, because it's like we're having people driving on their cars on yards, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me that we would want to encourage that.
But if you put parking on either, no parking on either side, they would still park in the yards, right?
Right.
Well, they, the ones that have started doing it were not.
Okay.
Okay, there, there definitely are people, like, as we know, that I've stressed, new, and I wish we could do something about that as well, but it's now become, you know, an issue, I've noticed. And the reason why they're doing it is because there's no room in the, in the street for them to park, and there's no shoulder, so it's, it's dangerous.
I believe Nadine brought that up. You guys want to look at the map?
I agree with you, Karen. Up, up by Second Street, I, I believe there is quite a bit of a ditch on the south side of that, up by.
Oh, there's a huge ditch, I, trust me, I've mowed it.
So that's, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm really trying to understand here, okay? So everyone's in agreement from Second Street to Forty-seventh? That's, that's a no-no. The ditch, the width?
Well, Third Street has the ditch, too.
Third Street?
Mm-hmm. Third Street, all the way up, is not.
So from Third Street to Forty-seventh?
Mm-hmm.
And what are you addressing, Scott?
Fourth to Fifth here, where most of, most of the driveways come out at Lakeview. I believe there's two lots here on between Third and Fourth, their, their driveways are on up at Fourth and Third Street anyway, but they have additional parking on, on Lakeview.
Yeah. You're talking about.
The nine-hundred block, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, so you're talking about this block right here?
Or the nine-hundreds, I don't know if it's that.
There's three brown roofs that you see there?
Yeah.
Okay, the last one comes off of Fifth. So you've got two, thirteen and twelve.
Twelve and thirteen?
And then eleven, ten, nine, eight, and seven. I don't know why now, of all times, they have issues, because for forty-something years there hasn't been an issue with parking in their driveway.
When did we put the signs up? Do we know?
So, it's what it looks like, twelve, eight, and seven are the only ones that have single driveways that would maybe cause a problem, right?
Yeah.
Eight, twelve and thirteen, okay, I got you.
And I wonder, you know, how much is the easement there? Because how far are they going to be parking in people's yards? If you allowed it on the south side? Which we, you know, discussed, that's not very wise.
I'm trying to visualize, the south side, I mean, I know there's a ditch up towards the Fourth Street, there's pretty good significant ditch.
Yeah, I'd hit the, I'd hit the vehicle, look at this before I could really, I see a house number eight, the ones with the single driveways are, I guess, limited, the ones with limited parking?
Seven, eight, twelve, and that's about it.
And the concern was during the holiday, when they had company over, there's zero parking, unless they were to go up a half a block upfield for Fourth Street, and I don't know if there's parking as a field for Fourth Street.
It's not the traffic there, so they could park right there and make their way down to the house. I mean, if they're talking just those individual times, I, I'm sorry to, to make Grandma walk, but drop her off at the. but drop her off at the door and park where it's safe, because, especially in holidays, you've got a bunch of traffic trying to get through as well. So, it just, it just doesn't seem safe to me. And I, I will fight this one tooth and nail, because I, this is me, right here at Third Street.
And I think another alternative, I mean, from what you're talking, is that there's, there's Lakeview right down here that has a large parking lot, correct?
Yeah, the, the park, right there. I mean, I'm sorry if they're inconvenienced, but the fact of the matter is, you bought the house, you knew you had a small driveway, you know? And it's not like they're going to have forty people in their house for Christmas, so...
You probably don't want to hear my comment on the whole thing.
Well, I do.
Because I have to, I have to say, you know, if we start it here, there are so many places in, in town, that we need to look at parking, not only on one side or the other, or both sides of the street, you know? My thing is, the city is required, you know, our job is to provide streets for people. And I've drive, drive some of these streets and watch, and again, it's, the kids are really, you know, you got parking, McKinley, where my father lives, I watch, parking there is, is, on the streets, a mess, you know? I'm almost to the point, if you've got too many cars to fit in your driveway, you've got too many vehicles. You know, we're, we're providing streets to drive on, not to park on. You know, so where does, where does the, where does the argument end? I, you know, like, today, coming Oak Street, right there on the hill, there was a UE truck parked by, what's that street there? The Short Street, by the Bed and Breakfast. And, and he was parked just this, I was coming west, he was parked just this side. I started to go around, and when here comes a car, popped up over the hill. And there's cars that park there a lot.
Yeah.
Not just emerging, not just an ambulance UE truck. So, you know, there's, where do you, where do you start, and where do you end?
Well, and another thing with that, Mike, I mean, this is one of my projects that we obviously had to cut out of the budget, because we have to put priorities. But I wanted a sidewalk considered down this street. You put a sidewalk, people have place, place to walk, and then it takes some of that hazard out. But there is no place for anybody, and there's a ton of kids. I mean, last night, there were kids here at, at Lakeview and Second Street, on the corner, on the road, looking at the moon, with their microscope, you know? I mean, this was at nine-thirty last night.
That's good.
What is it?
Well, it was a nice, it was a nice moon.
Yeah, but my, my point is, they have no place to go, they're in the streets. Yeah, it was a small moon, microscope?
That's right.
Yes. Anyway, my, my point is, if we can't sufficiently provide protection for all the pedestrians that are up and down that road, the last thing I want to do is allow more hazards that could create less protection for them. And if it's an inconvenience, because you have too many cars to be in your driveway, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to park on a side road, a, a north-south road, so that the main traffic isn't, you know, at issue. But there is a ton of traffic that goes up and down that road every single day.
Well, in Alderman Scott's defense, we need a short-term, we need some kind of fix. I mean, let's, let's look at what, hopefully we'll change it as of now.
Well, and I think the fix is, as long as they're allowed to park on Fifth Street and Fourth Street for their overflow, it, it's not that big of a walk, you know, between those two streets, you know, it's, I'm sorry, eleven and ten are the furthest, and Mazzy's going to be one of those, you know? He's all over safety.
Twelve, at least twelve.
Yeah. Fowler's, and then him. I think he's down from Fowler's, another spot, yeah. Time's up! Can I smack this?
Yeah, well.
So, as it stands, just to sum this up, south side is the, is allowed at this time, correct?
That's the best.
North side is still currently not by ordinance.
Correct.
I think we, we've had good discussion over, but it's something we're going to have to look at another time as well, to discuss a little bit more.
Well, how do we, how do we approach it, then? Does Chief go out and do a survey? Do we all make sure we drive there prior to the next meeting? Do we survey the residents?
I think it would behoove all of us to take a drive down there and see where both, both sides were coming from, for our own eyes. I mean, a picture's great, but when you get down there and you may see a ditch, it's a little bit more, and decide, hey, I don't think there should be any on south or north. It may, may get a little more priority on some other issue. I think it behooves all of us to go down there and take a drive.
What about, do we survey the people living in the area? We've done that before in certain circumstances.
See, the north side is your, your ward, south side is not.
Yeah, but I mean, even if that...
You know, we're only talking about, what, ten people? That would be a good idea, I mean, that, what's, out of those ten people, has anyone talked to them that, or who's, who's asking for the parking?
One of those.
I'm trying to get my head all around the whole.
Yeah, one of those ten.
And I am going to physically drive out there and...
But the thing is, it's not just those people, because it's, over here in Country Lane, all of them have children, all of those on First Street, and Second Street, and Third Street, and Fourth Street, they have children that are constantly going through there. So, you can't just survey the people that live on that street. You've got to go beyond that.
Because of safety issues and concerns with the kids.
Well, but I mean, that's an issue, we got to make sure in the next year's budget, that sidewalk goes out.
It was, it was substantial, but yeah, I mean, it...
Well, I mean, I think that's what we have to do.
And I, I would ask everybody that thinks this is a good idea, to be in that, on that street somewhere between seven AM and eight-thirty every morning, and three-thirty and five o'clock every night. Because only then are you going to see the amount of crazy traffic that goes up and down that road.
It's a main flow from the high school out.
I agree.
I mean, it is definitely from Worthington down.
Yeah, I mean, it, just, and my point is, just, don't, don't go there at ten o'clock in the morning and go, that's not a busy road.
No, I, I agree.
Because it's, it's a crazy road.
Okay, so, so from seven in the morning till eight-thirty are from three to four, all of us are going to view that area?
School, school, it's out of two-forty-one, just to let you know.
Good.
Because sometimes it'll clear out fast.
Sometimes the traffic cuts through that way.
All right, I'll take a look.
I should set up one of those trail cams.
Sure. I'm not telling.
Put a camo trail cam into the ditch.
Watch the park and high traffic too.
So, we want to just put the sign for discussion topic for next meeting?
I think, yeah, so we need to, I think we need to go, need to go out there and take an observation, and just see. I think it's a great recommendation.
I agree with you, though, Karen, I lived over there for years. It's crazy.
And it's not all people paying attention.
Crazy, beautiful.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next item would be hearing from our Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Korn.
My first item for you this evening is the Advent Monthly Report.
Agreed.
There's really nothing notable here. Happy to report there were no accidents or incidents during the month of October. Typical number of meetings and those types of things, so really nothing significant to point out for this month, which is a good thing.
It is a good thing.
It is.
The next item I have is the Professional Services for the Pool Park Area. We talked about a couple of meetings ago, the fact that we were going to need to have a grading plan and additional information, so that we could move forward with determining what we're going to have to do as far as the waterways, and what kind of permitting was going to be required. And so, we submitted a request for Professional Services to a fairly lengthy list of engineering firms out there. We received proposals from six firms. Those have been reviewed by Brandy and Jack. Some firms were contacted with additional questions, to make sure we're fully understood what they were submitting, because there's a fairly large gap between the low bid and the high bid, so we wanted to make sure that everyone was really looking at the same and bidding on the same proposal information. The recommendation after review is to go with BFA out of Washington, Missouri. They are not the low bidder, they're actually two-hundred-and-forty dollars above the low bidder. But they came back with some additional information in regard to some options that we could pursue, to try to reduce our impact, to get it below the three-hundred linear feet, that then requires an individual permit versus this nationwide permit where we're affecting waterways. I'll begin to understand all of that, but I know three-hundred linear feet seems to be the magic number to keep us in the permit that does not take us long to get approval for us to start doing something. Brandy did check with references that were provided by BFA. All seemed to be, we've not worked with this company before, so we don't have any firsthand knowledge, but all the references seemed positive. There were no negative concerns about them. They can do this within about, what looks to be about a forty-five day timeframe. We are somewhat under the gun, because we need to get our permit, so that we can do the grading before we get past the time when the bats might come back. And so, we need to get this report done, hopefully get a permit, and get that grading done before we get to that period of time where we can't grade, because there might be bats present. So, recommendation from staff is to go with BFA out of Washington, Missouri, in an amount of twenty-six thousand four-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Questions? So moved?
Sorry.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schell Harvey.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castley?
Yes.
Which K six-zero.
And the last thing is to let you know that the TIF Commission is having a work session on Thursday evening. They will be reviewing some of the numbers that are being divided by Development Dynamics, the planner, for the TIF, and then they are holding the required public hearing early in December. So, this is just to make sure that they really understand and get their questions answered about whatever numbers there might be, that are put together by the planners. We've done a new report, had a one-page summary, so hopefully that will help them with wading through some of those. So, should not be too long then into December, and then their recommendations for the TIF plan will be coming together for approval.
I intend to be there Thursday, and I don't know if anybody else does, so we need to be concerned about posting?
Yes.
Um, there really should not be a meeting of the board concurrent with the TIF Commission meeting. So, I think my recommendation is, if you all will select your representatives, and then that person can take the information back, because they are separate bodies and require separate meetings, so...
Is this like Thursday in two days?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, that's my recommendation.
So, how many people?
Two.
Two or three?
Two.
Two or three, three people.
Yeah, I would say no more than three of you at the very most, and you are not participatory in that meeting. You can be here as visitors, but it is not a usual meeting, very separate.
What time Thursday?
Is it seven PM?
Oh, six.
Is it six? Maybe it is six?
It's six.
I've got so many meetings going on, I can't even... So, if, if all of you who are planning on attending will let Melody know, so that somebody knows if we get toward that point where we're bordering on a meeting, which we do not want to do, so...
And Gary and I were planning on...
But if you, if you want to go, go ahead. I, I've spent a lot of time looking at the numbers already, so I'm not, I feel like I'm a little bit up to speed as to the members, not necessarily to how the committee's going, because that's, that's their choice. But you want to go before, I would, I would opt out if you want to go.
No, 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 I'm just going to make sure that we are represented, that's all. If, if you, if you're going to be there, that's, that's fine.
If you need to bring the information back to us. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. All right, available, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Would you just give it?
All right, next item will be hearing from the Public Works Director, Guy Jee.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I got my monthly report. Got some sidewalks completed on Hudson and Oak, some asphalt work completed, two sewer calls, one was for an older complaint, one was for a sewer backup.
Where was that at?
The backup, twenty-four, twenty-six Balboa Circle.
Balboa.
And the older complaints, somebody said they smell odor, smell sewer, and we come out and see if we see anything on the ground. A lot of that from P-traps in their house, they're dry.
Any other questions? One next up?
Hang on.
Next item I have is a change order for Hickory Lick.
There you go.
It's a no-cost change order.
Oh.
Where's that no-cost?
You can't come up with one that's cost-reduction change order?
No.
That's better than nothing.
This ain't Gonzalez's change order.
Zero dollars.
It just, it has to be posted, that it's, we use different rock in a different location. It's a no-cost.
All right, any questions or comments on that?
Is changing, just changing the rock size?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? So, I assume that project's proceeding as expected?
Slowly, yeah. They're supposed to start tomorrow.
Okay.
Digging and putting a rock down. We've had issues with charter.
We have to wait.
All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Hickory Lick no-cost change order.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Delloy, seconded by Alderman Miller. Go call up, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castley?
Yeah.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion K six-zero. Thank you, guys.
That's all right. Thank you.
Next is hearing from the Chief of Police, Greg Hodge.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
The only thing I have this evening is our activity report from October. I'm happy to say that we're finally going to be at full staff.
Good.
So, we've got two guys coming on board. You guys approved those earlier, but one actually comes to us with a little bit of experience from St. Louis City. He was ready to get out of there, I don't know why.
Under one.
And the other one, actually a very cool story, I can't wait until you guys meet him. He aspired to always be a warranted police officer, and made that happen. Sent himself to the academy, and will be graduating on Thursday night.
While he was doing what?
I'm sorry?
While he was doing what?
While he was dispatching at Communications.
Which is kind of nice to know that side of it.
Yeah, so, he's, he's gung ho, and as I said, he's, he's going to be graduating Thursday night, so we actually get to pin his badge on him at his graduation.
It is, that's, that is cool.
Yeah. Other than that, everything's going pretty well. The Detective Bureau is finally getting ramped up. Ungar's just about physically moved over into the Bureau. He had a few shifts that he had to work, just to cover, but now that we've got these new guys, hopefully we can move forward and get the road rolling again.
Is there an awful lot of syringes being found in the community?
Oh, yeah.
We need to report, you know, syringe found here, I mean, it's like, is that...
It's, it's been going on for quite a while.
Has it?
Yes. Yeah, that's not really anything, you know?
Yeah, the other, the other day I was driving by Petramore, and two of the offices there were opening a suitcase or something on the side there. Do we do that? I mean, we don't have a robot, I understand, but...
Well, I, I think if they suspected that there was something dangerous in there, they certainly would not have done that. would not have done that. But, I mean, I'm not gonna speculate as to what they were looking for, but probably drug.
It was just sitting there on one of the outside islands.
Oh, I see.
But, yeah, so... Anyway, I would like to say congratulations to Greg on successfully completing those rappelling exercises. And I saw the pictures, you did not look terrified like they said.
I, I was, I was not. I was remarkably calm, actually, and thank you for that. And actually, thank you to everyone that donated to, to that effort. First of all, our team actually was the second in the St. Louis run, only behind KSLQ that had eight or ten participants. So, we were, we were off of their pace by about four thousand dollars, I think. And I also ended up as the number one fundraiser on this side of the state.
Congratulations, congratulations.
You know, the really cool thing about that is people are paying attention to what's going on in Warrenton, at least at the Special Olympics level. So, it's, it's pretty cool.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Do they do it again next year?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I, for those of you that haven't seen the pictures, I actually had a distinct honor of getting to, there were two parallel ropes, and I actually got to descend with a Special Olympics athlete that's from Warrenton. He was chosen out of all of the Special Olympic athletes in the St. Louis area to participate. Somebody else donated the funds to make sure that he was able to do it. And although Mike was terrified, actually absolutely scared of heights, he, after a little bit of coaxing, got out there and, and went over the edge, and it was a pretty slow descent, but it was very cool. And I, you know, kind of went right with him, so it was really slow descent, and, you know, we were talking to each other the whole time, but it was cool. It was very cool.
Excellent. Great. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And next will be hearing from Zoning Officer and Building Commissioner, Jack Cannon. Pop that.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Yeah, what building are you going off?
Well, I tried to jump off a bridge earlier today. Nothing as exciting as chief. Big, big footsteps to follow in. At the monthly report, got some excitement. We've got our eighth new residential start.
That's awesome.
Compared to three last year, that's exciting news.
It is good.
I'm confident we should have nine before the end of the year, if everything comes through right, so...
Great. Can you tell me what these water, the notice of violations on water?
I think Diane made a mistake when she filled out the thing, and that should be weed, not, not water.
Okay.
I'll have that corrected for next month, but I noticed that, too.
I noticed I paid attention.
That's awesome.
I just couldn't figure out what that was gonna be.
Yeah, we wouldn't have had fifteen water violations in one month.
Any questions?
The only comment I have, Jack, is thank you. I guess it was your department, because I know, when I talked to the guy out there with the caterpillar, he said Tom was coming around to check and make sure that, but thanks for getting the caterpillar removed there off Warrior Ridge. It's been sitting there for approximately seven years, so I know the residents in that area are really appreciative that we finally got something done with that. And the weeds now are kind of cleared away, so thanks a lot for getting on that.
Okay. And there is a public hearing tomorrow with some weeds out in that area, but hopefully we'll get them resolved.
When we were at the meeting with the realtors about a month and a half ago, conversation came up, we asked them what could be done better, and the conversation came up about giving final occupancy permits and establishing lawns and the delay, because the realtors were complaining about the, what I gathered is the title companies were holding back money till the final permit was issued, and part of it had to do with the establishing of the lawn. Is that something we need to take a look at and discuss?
We are, we are.
We are, are we currently working on that?
Currently looking into it to be able to bring to a meeting.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
We are hoping to have a proposal for your consideration at the next couple of meetings.
Okay, great.
Any other questions you guys?
And by the way, I do appreciate you accompanying us at that meeting. I think it turned out to be more of a positive note than any of us thought it would be. So, I mean, your input was very valuable, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and like we talked, we wish there'd have been more builders there, but the one that was there, I think, had...
Very good things to say.
Yeah, had some very good input as far as Jack and what they're doing, so, you know, kind of put our minds at ease a little bit, that we're not the bad guys that everybody tries to paint us that we are, so...
So, there you go, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, any more questions or comments? All right. The next item will be bills to ordinance. Entertaining motion for the first reading of Bill number forty-four dash sixteen.
So moved.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
Are you able to change, take an E out of removing after we've approved it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't have a problem.
No, no problem whatsoever.
Yeah.
Okay, the motion is, as it stands, Alderman Miller's made motion. I need a second?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Miller, signed by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance amending section two zero five point one nine zero of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri by removing chickens from the list of prohibited animals.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number forty-four dash sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance amending section two zero five point one nine zero of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri by removing chickens from the list of prohibited animals.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultze Harvey?
No.
Alderman Person Casterly?
No.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
No.
Didn't see that one coming, did you?
You have split, no I didn't. I will vote in favor for it, for the tiebreaker vote. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number forty-five dash sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna take Alderman Miller. Will be, motion was made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Miller.
In ordinance of the city of Warrenton, Missouri authorizing the keeping of chickens within the city limits.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill number forty-two dash sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Schultz this time.
In ordinance of the city of Warrenton, Missouri authorizing the keeping of chickens within the city limits.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schultze Harvey?
No.
Alderman Person Casterly?
No.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
No.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Split vote again, and I will vote in favor for it.
You've had to vote twice now this year.
I know.
That's the first time he's ever voted twice this year.
I know. She had to buy us a beer.
All right, next item on the agenda will be executive session. I will entertain a motion to close the regular board meeting, Board of Alpiners meeting, and go into executive session for real estate and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultze Harvey, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultze Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Person Casterly?
No.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Aw!
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
I tried to make them both three times.
Four to two passage, and we are so adjourned.